I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to the April 16th meeting of the county council. All my colleagues are here except Chase who is unable to attend. Sean Toll is here to make sure we do it right. And we welcome everybody that's here. So, on the agenda, Charlie, you're the short stick. You get to go first.
I appreciate that either way. I'm here responding to an email from the auditor in March to report on the COVID grant at the libraries last year. We spent all the money. We've been to the project. We've already got the new computers out and we've been using them for a while, but the bulk was on the digital scanner that we've been doing local history. So, some of that's on Indiana memory and some of it's on our website we created called Kiwanah History. So, we've got people working on it around the clock right now. There's a kind of like unemployment agency for people that's hurt themselves on the job, like an occupational thing, re-employability, and they send me candidates and I've trained some of them to scan. So, that machine's been being used every day for about two months. So, we'll have all that history preserved if we're ready to move on to the next stage of history re-polling.
For those that don't know, you want to end what your title is, please. If there is someone here that doesn't-
Charlie Rud, Kiwanah Library Director.
Thank you.
Making this man-
Like everyone knows, but in case you're fine-
Yeah, that's why I'm sorry.
That's quite all right.
Just wanted to come and ask any questions over the grant and close it out, finish it up. I think the report I give you from here on would be that we're done and don't have anything else further except using the equipment every day to do the mission, the whole purpose of it.
I believe as long as the funds have been used, then you don't have to report to us that it's being done. You've accomplished your goal and the requirements.
There's a packet with the auditor and then I left one here with all the detailed receipts.
If anyone wants to look at it, I have it here. If anyone wants to look at it, they're welcome to. Thank you, we're glad to look at it.
Sure. All started over finding an Abraham Lincoln assassination newspaper under the piano in the library. And so, I was trying to figure out how to preserve history. That was about 10 years ago. So, to see it come through and start actually saving the history that's deteriorating, it's not going to be good to save. Now, we'll make it accessible to everybody and hopefully expand into more full county material too, once we're done.
Well, I'm glad you were able to do that. Preserve the history.
So, the ARCA funds were appreciated and we had no problem using them?
Yes. I gave a few people in the room here a tour of it and showed them what they're doing. Also have the high school page that comes in and scans for me too. So, we're trying to collaborate with as much free labor as we can.
Any more questions or comments for Charlie?
Thank you much.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
No worries. Next on the agenda, I had Mr. Lee here for Endot, but he requested to be here, but I don't see him. So, we'll move on. To department updates, Mr. Guyer, Mr. Fizz, whoever wants to jump in and go first. Sorry Travis, I saw you bend down, I didn't see.
All right.
He did that on purpose.
Evening.
Good evening.
Don't have a whole lot tonight, other than guys to patch the holes, brush cutter, change the culvert. Working on getting Hole 31 ready for paving here next month. Did put out an RFP today for Hole 31 North repaving yet, so we'll be selecting a consultant on that project here pretty soon. That's five years out, since that's 2029 when it gets paved. Put the RFP out for it. Bridge 31, getting started on it. That's five years out, or four years now, but Bridge 161, that one's a federal aid project. We let that this fall and we've had some issues with right-of-way utilities down there, but we seem to be getting them cleared out, so that's starting to go forward again.
Can I interrupt you?
Yes.
It just don't know, you said that you put out an RFP today for consultant selection on Hole 31 North for the engineering on it. And what happened for five years out?
Right.
Really?
We just got awarded the project.
Right.
We got awarded, say about $600,000.
Okay.
Give or take some change.
Okay.
For the project in Hole, based on our preliminary engineering estimates.
Okay.
And then now we were to select an engineering firm to help us design and pave that route.
In five years?
Which is exactly what-
Is that how you, see, I guess I didn't realize that, that even though the actual work won't be done forever and ever, you have to start now.
So, our match, so it's an 80/20.
Yeah.
So, our match, I started budgeting back, starting this year, we'll start budgeting back, you know, a hundred plus thousand dollars and save back for that project in five years, which is exactly what we did on Hole 31 South, which that one, they start paving here probably in May, is what I've been told. So, five years ago, we put out an RFP, selected a consultant, and designed the design work and then we just went out for letting in January on that. And then that'll come to pass this summer.
Does anything, another stupid question, does anything ever happen that the design work, the standard, the change within five years?
Yes. Prices of-
Event.
There's lots of variables.
Okay, sorry.
And this one will be interesting because, you know, we're fighting in the shoulders to accommodate buggies. There's cut downhill at 450 for site. There might be the possibility of putting in, you know, turn-off lanes. There's a lot of things to consider on that road at all.
That's going to be a unique project. Thank you, sorry to interrupt.
Okay. Yes, sir.
The last bridge, is that the one over Gashi Street?
Yes.
What was that number again?
161.
I should know that one.
And we started that one four years ago, so.
Huh.
Yeah, all of it taken, and it's five years of paperwork and meetings and, and if you think back, I think you went with me to one of them, we first got into meetings five years ago.
Couldn't report?
Yeah.
Talk about?
Mm-hmm. I don't remember the topic, but you went with me on that.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Probably paving Hole 31 South, I guess.
Thank you.
We did get community crossings awarded to us until I saw it to you. We got a million and a half of community crossing projects, so we'll take in paving, culvert replacement, and some asphalt treatment. We have to, we go for bids for them on the 6th of May, so that'll be moving forward here this summer.
Is that a 70% back, 25% match, or?
Yes. So, we'll have about a half million dollars in match money there. I'm not even going to try them now. Next thing I want to talk to you about was State Road 14, they're closing in. Talked to the commissioners last night, we're going to set up unofficial detours for that on 550 South, which is the Star City Blacktop and 400 North. And we're going to take them from 17 over to 35. We work with Endot and Glasske County, that's grounds we've got to get everybody back over to 35. Basically, what I've been told is, starting first of May, they're going to close that down and start changing culverts. So, it won't be a closure. I think their advertisement was from May to November, so the whole move won't be closed that long. But for a month or so, they'll have a close change of culverts, and then when they actually do the paving, it'll be one lane traffic with flyers. Other than that, we got offered to buy the millings off of that, $500 a ton, I talked to commissioners last night, and included that purchase, so.
That's what we did, took Hole 31 on it there a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
It worked out well.
Yeah, we gave $3 a ton then, but that was about three, four years ago.
No question.
Inflation.
That's right, after we bought Kiwanah.
It worked out well. This won't be near as many, but it'll still be a significant amount, probably looking at 20,000 tons.
Good deal.
That's about everything I got for you.
Thank you. Anyone else coming in? I got a kudos for you guys that tied the department. I called you about a truck or something that ran off the road. You guys got that fixed, I thought you were good.
John Flynn took care of that.
I was off with John, I was out there.
He fixed that up.
Didn't that truck?
See, that truck went off.
That's what I kind of figured, but where the location was, it looked like they tried to fix it themselves and should have. You guys did nice job on that.
That was all John. He doesn't rain even a thing.
Anything else standing for John?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I emailed the reports out this morning, I thought I didn't need them to sooner. Any questions on those, the questions before the monthly reports?
I have none.
Yep. All right. We invoiced for roughly $54,000 last month for out-of-county inmates and federal inmates. We switched our phone coverage, our phone contract in the jail from CTC and Stellar. That transition took place last week, went super smooth, less than I expected it to. Part of that transition is we've got a broadcasting TV in the lobby now that broadcasts out information that we put on there, so all of our public notices, like Mariposa Meeting, Sheriff's yesterday, and everything we put on there, and I have crap hanging on the walls or on the counters or anything else, so definitely streamlined that. It also broadcasts out to the sub-blocks, we put information out to the inmates, like the handbook and the procedures for grievances and whatfore. And then also for the booking area, if there's specific things that they want to push out to inmates coming in, circum rules and things that they can expect coming in. So, all in all, we're really excited about the new system coming in, so. Jay Salientes, our second to newest deputy, he graduates from the academy Friday, we'll go down for that down at Plainfield, and then he's done with FTO and everything, so we'll have him on the road pretty quick after that. So, we were holding 72 inmates yesterday, I didn't look this morning, 15 Wabash County inmates with eight federal inmates. And that is pretty much all I have. If you guys have questions for me?
When, when does Wabash County, we lose those, I know the building's up, but-
They were supposed to open last fall, so.
I know they had issues.
They had a lot of construction issues. Yeah, a lot of construction issues. It depends on who you ask. I think realistically, probably, probably the middle of the summer, but I know Howard County is busting at the seams right now too, and they're under a couple of federal lawsuits from the ACLU concerning their overcrowding, so hopefully we can pick up where Wabash County leaves off, so.
We go Wabash County.
Yeah, it's true too. I know we paid enough out during our jail project, so.
It's a big building down there, I know that.
It is, yeah. And they had, I mean, they were close to opening and then they had some type of, you know, catastrophic roof issue that just sent everything way back, so, yeah, did get a hard line. I have to talk to the chair down there and unlock yourself, so.
So, at this point, you're not holding in Howard County?
No, Howard County doesn't need us right now. The door's open for them, so, and I know that they're, they're working it, so, I foresee that in the near future, we'll start holding Howard County, so.
Okay.
Anybody else stand? Thank you. Anything else?
I've got nothing.
Kathy, you got anything?
No. Tactical action's started, so.
You got it.
The fun has just begun.
Rick, do you want to say anything, or do you want me to say?
I would too.
Oh, thank you very much. Amy, you're the only one left.
I am the only one.
Yeah, that's, 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 you'll be back to me.
Uh, just, some of you were not here yesterday, but I, I gave three quick reports, being at home, had a follow-up meeting with them after the gentleman came. We are looking at potentially being the recipients of the opportunity to check out mobile advocacy. It's a program that they are doing in Iowa to look at a different way of providing support for domestic violence and sexual assault instead of the purely shelter model, which means that we would have to figure out how to bring all the folks from Fulton County to Casillas County, which according to research that the team has done is not helpful, I can imagine, because they have jobs and children are at school, so it doesn't actually work that way to do that. They are looking at other models. And so, the conversation that was had at our strategic plan after the follow-up was that we will be researching that, circling it around to the commissioners to talk about what mobile advocacy for Fulton County would look like. So, that's all I've got for that. And then we do have our transportation survey that we did get extension until the end of April. That will help to provide a detailed report so that we can fully understand what resources are needed for transportation. So, historically, Transco has done surveys of their riders, but Transco Board has given us the ability to survey the entire county. But we know that if we don't get survey results, we will not have any details to be able to put a report together. So, I just keep saying that out loud, that that information is there and that anybody who can help us to get survey results of what transportation needs are, whether that's related to work or grocery shopping or medicine, doctor visits, that would be helpful to have people fill out surveys, so. That is, the paper copies are at the libraries, the electronic version is on Facebook for the electronic survey link.
And those surveys will end up going where to be?
Yes, thank you for that.
Contaminated or whatever.
Yeah, so those will go to IUK, which we've worked with them before. The business students will basically take the paper copies and the electronic surveys, put them in a nice report that gives us a detailed professional report that we will have the ability to present to the Transco Board, so that they can then talk to the folks at the state to share if there are needs that are uncovered that potentially Doug could apply for additional grants for.
Okay.
That's the-
That's the end goal.
That is the end goal.
More money.
So, more money if there's a need that's uncovered that we are not meeting and that Transco says that they could potentially meet through additional funding.
Okay, thank you.
So, that report, I believe they said, should be ready in the summer, based on our timeline. And then last but not least, I know Gail's not here to talk about it, oh, she is, never mind, I'll let her talk about the other thing, so. Just working hard trying to. Oh, April 23rd at 11, if you are interested in going to learn about Project Independence, which would be the tool that I had shared about when I presented the full strategic plan, that tool is the one-on-one support of individuals who have been identified in communities that continue to struggle and are unable to find themselves getting out of the system. This Project Independence has proven to be successful in Casillas County to assist individuals to break free from the continual need for assistance. So, we will be researching that on April 23rd at 11 at Combined Community Services, which is the food bank in Casillas County, and anybody is welcome to attend that if they would like. It's an open invitation to anybody, so.
Any questions?
No, thank you. You're welcome.
Last but not least. We're going to save the best for last, see if they may look at it.
I only have a couple. First thing, thanks Lori for coming this morning. I think some of you are coming tonight to supper for dispatchers, so appreciate that. The radio payment, are we discussing that this evening?
Yes and no.
Okay. Well, that answers my question, but you know what it's all about, right?
Yes.
Paying for the county rates.
Yeah, Sean Toll and I had a little bit of a discussion on that, so.
Okay, yeah, because we do need to get that.
We got to get it paid, I mean, one way or another, we got to pay it.
Yeah.
That's, you know, that's a benefit, we need to pay that. We either have to, we're going to do it by the book, one way or another. So, we either have to make it our assets, which means we have to keep track of them through John Doe Fire Department.
We already keep track of them.
Well, as long as we got that and I can get through, then we'll get an additional appropriation started.
Yeah.
And get it paid for.
Yeah, we're going to keep a track of them through IDs, through the county.
Is that satisfying, the county's track of assets?
As long as it's on a capital asset form that's turned in, I guess that's all we need on that.
We can do it that way, be it easy that way. That way, we can, we get it paid for. That's, that's my concern, is paying the bill and doing it the right way.
Yeah, however it is used.
Well, sometimes easy isn't the right way, but I want to do it the right way.
Whatever is the right way, I mean, either way is going to be fine with me as well.
All right.
Because we already got them documented, and how that works is the state committee keeps tracks of those IDs. If they do not use them, they shut them off and they become boat anchors, and we lose those IDs. So, it is with the state's 700 or 800 metro system.
But you again, aren't the radios considered the asset, the physical asset?
Yes, but they are kept track of.
Okay, all right, that's, then we'll approach that. Probably have to have an additional appropriation, once we get a chance to discuss where we get it out of, but yes, we will take it.
Okay. The other thing is I met with the job classification committee to move that part-time to full-time. Met with Lori and-
It's on the, it's on the list.
Oh, it's on the list.
Yes.
We're going to talk about it.
Well, that's all I have. How you like that? I mean, in reference to money-wise, the other thing that Amy is talking about, we attended a meeting with the pastors, I don't know if a priest was there, but anyway, with the Christian groups on the homeless and developing a warming and cooling shelter plan for them, as EMA, we have to have one for the entire county, but when it comes to the homeless and they don't have that stability, where are they going to go for six months, four months, or whatever out of here when it's continuous cold cycle, heat cycle, or vice versa, and worrying about the safety of those individuals, there is a plan that we're mocking, and so we're trying to work together, collaboration, and get the plan. So, it's a great county plan. We're only for emergencies, obviously, but they need one stability on there, and so it'll be a joint effort to look at the whole county as a whole.
Joint between what parties?
There would be a plan with, so we don't have any financial responsibility on that. That is on the, whatever groups that handle that, they will be vested through that. Ours is an emergency plan, it's short-term, we cannot have people stay longer unless there's an event, longer than, you know, the 72 hours where you call Red Cross and then those things come in.
You mean at the EMS building you're talking about?
Our warming and cooling stations are at the fire stations. We cannot have people stay there because we have emergencies going in and out with that.
Right, okay.
We just can't maintain and, I don't want to say babysit or monitor things, we just don't have the staffing and the volunteers to cover that. So, on there, they have the volunteers and that's their groups, and they understand their groups. It's that plan, we, a vital plan that's for all the county that we're not scrambling or trying to make decisions at the last minute to help those in need, and they're calling emergency services. There's a, there's a break there, and if we can collaborate more together and they understand our ways and we understand theirs, I think it works better when writing a plan. And we have to have that for our emergency operation plan, warming and cooling.
Was this the meeting that was held at the Community Resource Center?
Yes, ma'am.
In the last?
March 4th, I remember that because it's my brother's birthday.
It's just a collaboration.
So, was this new information to the people that were attending?
No.
Ish, so.
Were they surprised about the need?
Yes.
I guess is what I, was what I'm asking you.
In my humble opinion, some of them looked a little shocked, which is why I think it took a second for them to circle back around, because we were concerned because there was a lack of individuals signing up to assist, and we took that as disinterest, but after having our pastoral connection board member, Pastor Hartman on Hope, follow up, it wasn't a lack of interest, it was a bit of shock that, that, I mean, obviously, that, anyways, neither here nor there, they have, now some new individuals have come forth and said they would be interested, now that they've processed it and-
Okay, good, good. So, that meeting was beneficial?
Very much so.
And, and positive?
Yeah.
Okay.
We believe so.
Okay.
We saw work to do, but we think it will be-
Okay, yeah, okay. Interesting, thank you.
I think it will be well.
Okay.
And then now, if you're going to discuss the other, then, I mean, it's all the question.
Tell them what you want and that we approve it, and we want them to approve it too.
Shortly between the points.
It's next on the list.
It's next on the list.
Do you have anything else?
I don't have any other questions.
Who, who's classification's next, who's going to, Pete, you going to do it again?
No.
Well, he can't.
He doesn't.
Lori, you want to?
Yeah, me too.
I don't care. Well, we met on, on the-
April 3rd.
Okay, whatever you say, it's on the document. April 3rd, there it is, I found it. And she has a dispatcher in 911 position that we are changing, or we'll have to change salary ordinance from nine full-time to 10 full-time, and we want to make it as of April 16th that that will happen, and the wage will be the $21.99 an hour for that full-time position. And that's our recommendation to you to vote for that.
And to add to that, I, I think that Gail said to us that part of this request is because that the county 911 dispatch center is going, is going to take over the city's dispatch?
Yes, correct. And we have somewhat done that already.
Have you?
Where we basically take care of everything at, you know, at a certain point overnight, and then any mishaps they may have down there, or they're not available and so forth. So, we've had a joint effort for quite some time now, and I don't know what that's going to look like. I don't believe I need any more staffing. Obviously, we had somebody that is going on maternity leave as we spoke, and, and the coverage, we just need to make sure that coverage is there. So, with that being said, I already have a part-timer moving to-
That you're moving on, yeah.
Yes, she's already started and has training and has partner certifications. She is a prior dispatcher from a few years ago.
Yes, and I think you told us too that you have, have funds to-
That's correct. They will not-
They will not re-benefit in your line of general.
Yes.
Yes.
We already have funds for that established, and we're working on a collaborative effort with the city on, on a centralized dispatch. And that has not been finalized at this time.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay. So, so thank you, and thanks Lori. So, so we approved that, and now we're asking for the approval or recommendation for the entire council.
Any other questions from anybody? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the job classification. Steve? Need a second? Bring the segment, all in favor? Five-zero, Pete abstaining. Approved.
Thank you very much. Effective today.
Thank you. I will, Ms. Brandy now. She has a second.
Okay. Now comes the fun stuff. Anyone else?
It's all fun stuff.
See anybody?
It's all fun stuff.
All right, we have several ordinances to go through. Do you want to help me, did we do first, second, third reading all tonight, or do we have to wait until next month for the third?
Then I would say the first two, we can do tonight. All three. The last one we have to, we, of course.
No, absolutely, absolutely, last one, I just didn't know.
Yeah, yeah.
That's all right, we'll, we'll talk amongst ourselves up here, we'll be all right. First ordinance is zero-four-one-six-two-zero-two-four, an ordinance establishing the approval uses of Fulton County Jail Commissary Fund. Whereas the Fulton County Council, the fiscal body of Fulton County, State of Indiana, and whereas the Fulton County Sheriff's Office, hereafter FCSO, maintain the Fulton County Detention Center, hereafter the jail, establish pursuant to IC Code thirty-six dash two, dash two, dash twenty-four, and sale jail, send jail operates a commissary for the inmates. And whereas the Fulton County Council previously established a commissary fund under the administration of the FCSO pursuant to IC Code thirty-six dash eight, dash ten, dash twenty-one, and whereas the sheriff, or the sheriff's designate, without appropriation by the Fulton County Council, is authorized to disperse, disperse money from commissary fund in accordance with the statute and provisions herein established. Whereas IC Code three dash eight, dash ten, subsection nine, permits expenditure of funds on items which benefit the sheriff's office, as are mutually agreed upon between the sheriff and the county council. And therefore, be it ordained by Fulton County Council, County of Fulton, State of Indiana, that the commissary fund may be utilized for the following expenditures. A, commissary operating expenses to include, but not limited to, obtaining merchandise for resale to inmates, maintenance of the FCSO and jail facilities, and compensation of personnel. B, training for employees. C, equipment purchase and rental, to include, but not limited to, vehicles, vehicle titles, storage facilities, computers, computer software, communication devices, office machinery, office furnitures, camera, photographic equipment, animals, animal training, holding and feeding equipment, and supplies for the animals, and the tire use and employees in the course of their official duty. D, any activity provided to maintain order and discipline among the inmates. E, any supplied activities and programs deemed by the sheriff to be beneficial to the morale and the well-being of the inmates. F, replacement of lost and damaged inmate property. G, inmate transit costs. H, postage for indigent inmates. I, shipping costs for equipment and evidence. J, replacement of damaged county employee property. K, investigation and special detail expenses, including controlled drug buys. L, advertising and sponsorship costs. M, matching funds for grants. N, professional, technical, and legal consulting fees. O, expenses associated with the hosting, training, events, and meetings. P, travel costs for employees attending professional meetings. Q, expenses associated with professional events, inmates, employees' holiday events, retirement events, service awards, plaques, recognition, et cetera. And R, all statutory authorized uses. Are there any questions?
I have just one.
And, sir?
And so does Travis.
On paragraph five, the IC Code that was defined thirty-six, it should be thirty-six, eight, ten, D, nine. Lori, I should do that to our attention.
Thank you.
Prior to.
Because I've still not worn them, I still can't find them. Which one is it Travis said yet?
One, two, three, four, five, the fifth paragraph down, it says whereas, Indiana Code thirty-six, I, I can't remember what was on there, but Lori did that to our attention.
It has a three dash eight, and there is no three dash eight.
Yeah, it's thirty-six dash eight, dash ten, D, nine.
Oh, okay.
D is in David?
D is in David, nine.
So, so it's thirty-six, not three?
Correct.
Is the issue. So, just write, write it in there, digit, good.
Thirty-six, eight, ten, D, nine, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Phil, you got questions?
Just real briefly, what is the current balance in the commissary fund?
Well, you're asking questions. I don't have a figured.
Don't worry about it.
It roughly, it maintains between eighty and a hundred thousand.
Okay.
So, I'm good to give you an exact figure.
That's fine, that's fine.
I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this an account that you keep a separate checking account on, or is it going through the auditor?
Correct, yeah, none of it goes through the auditor, it's all statutorily defined in statute, and already has a cash book. We have to, I, I think it's once every.
Two months, okay.
Every six months, twice a year.
January and July.
We give you guys a commissary report of the expenditures out, the, the money coming in and everything.
And you'll keep doing that?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
This is, when we went February, January, February, we were talking about the courthouse furniture. This was kind of to clean that up, that way, we don't have to come back and look for minutes on that. For state board of council, we can say, look, if this is the reason why we got furniture for that is because you guys blessed it ahead of time with this ordinance, so. That's really, I mean, that's really the only reason for it. Most, all of these, A through, A through R's are already in the statute.
They are.
You know, there's, something like the inmate, inmate, personal property is loosely defined in the statute, so that, that'll protect us if, like, we lost a, our staff did a shakedown, I think last fall, and, and lost some dentures for an inmate, that's why I threw them away. So instead of that inmate filing a tort and all of that, and then going through other legal proceedings, we utilize commissary and replace the eight hundred dollar dentures, and, and that, you know, just eliminates all of that, so.
Any other questions? If not, I will entertain a motion on the initial first reading of ordinance zero-four-one-six-two-zero-two-four. I will entertain a motion to approve. Pete, Pete made the motion, Lori second, all in favor?
Okay, so now you're.
Now, I will ask, entertain a motion for second and third reading, or just the second reading?
How about second and third by title only?
Second and thirty, by, third, by title only. Steve, Lori approves, sorry, Lori. Phil approved, and Steve seconded, all in favor? Second, third reading of ordinance zero-four-one-six-two-zero-two-four, an ordinance establishing the approved uses of the Fulton County Jail Commissary Fund. Entertainer motion to approve. Steve approved. Pete seconded, all in favor? Approved, secure. Thank you. This is the sixteenth day.
Oh, it's the pass and sign, and.
Yes, it is, pass and sign, please.
Or maybe sign and pass, maybe it should be that way. Okay.
All right, second ordinance, zero-four-one-six-two-zero-two-four, A, is amending the jail and detention center population general ordinance, number one-zero-one-nine-two-zero-two-zero. Whereas county commissioners of Fulton adopted general ordinance number one-zero-one-nine-two-zero-two-zero, jail and detention center population ordinance on November second, twenty-twenty, and the council adopted on November seventeenth, twenty-twenty, to maximize revenues by offering available space to house out-of-county inmates at a negotiated per diem rate per person per day. And whereas ordinance one-zero-one-nine-two-zero-two-zero establishes the Fulton County Jail Facility Fund, local fund number forty-three-hundred, for collected per diem charges for use of unoccupied beds. And whereas ordinance one-zero-one-nine-two-zero-two-zero directs said funds collected to be placed in specific categories, seventy percent will be held for debt reduction, fifteen percent held for maintenance of the jail facility, and fifteen percent will be held for the operation of the jail facility. And whereas it is necessary for keeping the funds separate for separate use to create additional local funds to hold the charges collected for housing out-of-county inmates. And whereas it is necessary to define the purpose of the three total funds that will hold the charges collected for housing out-of-county inmates. Therefore, be it ordained to create and maintain a total of three funds to hold charges collected for housing out-of-county inmates for use as follows. Number one, fund number forty-three-hundred, the Fulton County Jail Facility Fund shall now be used for holding seventy percent of the charges collected for housing out-of-county inmates for a period of ten years, for the purpose of paying down the debt reduction in accordance with applicable Indiana codes and bond trustee guidelines. Number two, fund number forty-three-zero-one, Fulton County Jail Maintenance Fund shall be established for holding fifteen percent of the charges collected for housing out-of-county inmates for maintaining the jail facility, jail facility grounds, equipment to be used for maintaining the facility, and/or its grounds, buildings, or maintaining storage space for equipment to be used for maintaining the facility and its grounds, or for any other purpose the Fulton County Council approves. Number three, fund number forty-three-zero-two, Fulton County Jail Operations Fund shall be established for holding fifteen percent of the charges collected for housing out-of-county inmates for operation of the facility, including supporting wages for all sheriff's department personnel, including employees of the jail facility, and sheriff's department employees, merit deputies, benefits, supplemental wages, and training. These funds may be utilized as requested by Fulton County Sheriff and appropriated by Fulton County Council. This ordinance shall be enforced in effect upon passage. So for those who are new to the board, Sheriff Sayers, when we built the jail, he suggested that we take out of county inmates, and then he also suggested that we take that fund and use it for future maintenance costs, future staffing issues, and also to pay down the bond when it comes due in ten years. And we made this ordinance, Rick was here, we made this ordinance so that the money goes to those funds, and no one else, after Sheriff Sayers, Sheriff Heisman, can dip into those funds for something that we designate that we don't want to use them for. This is just a bit of accounting, because otherwise it was all in one fund, and the auditor had no way of knowing if they use this fund if it comes out of what. So this is just an accounting issue that we do to make sure we have three separate funds, that the money, when we get it every month, will be divided seventy, fifteen, and fifteen, so it goes into separate funds. The current funds are in forty-three-hundred, will be divided seventy, fifteen, and fifteen, so that we know now that, we know exactly what fund is gonna come out of, and we can't touch that seventy percent. So in ten years, when the bond comes up for refinance, we have hopefully several million dollars to put on the bond to be able to pay the jail down and save the county interest. That, that was the foresight in doing this, this is just an accounting issue. Any questions?
Ron, I did read on the original ordinance, after I spoke with you guys earlier. It did say that the said ordinance shall be altered or added without a unanimous vote from the commissioners and the council. So we're required both you and the commissioner.
Okay, that was a question we've asked.
Yeah, and I didn't read that until it was.
Can we take it to the commissioners after the fact, and bring it up at your next meeting?
I don't know why, I don't know why not.
Okay, all right, I just, I don't want to delay it anymore, I wanna get it started if possible.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there are no questions, I entertain a motion on the first reading of ordinance zero-four-one-six-two-zero-two-four, A. Steve approved, Lori seconded, all in favor? Six-zero. Now I will also entertain a motion to approve second and third reading of this ordinance by title only. Lori moved, Pete seconded, all in favor? Second, third reading, amending jail, I'm sorry, ordinance zero-four-one-six-two-zero-two-four, A, amending the jail and detention center population general ordinance one-zero-one-nine-two-zero. I will entertain a motion to approve the second and third reading.
So moved.
Phil moved, Lori seconded, all in favor? Six-zero, thank you very much. This is another sign.
Sign and pass.
Oh, this is the third one. All right, this is our ordinance on the lit tax. This is for EMS and EMS only. This ordinance is zero-four-one-six-two-zero-two-four, B, ordinance modifying local income tax rates for Fulton County. Be it ordained by the county council, the Fulton County need now exist to modify the local income tax rate imposed in the following way. And there are allocation rate categories, which I'll read, one certified shares, existing rates one point zero, proposed rate one point zero. Public safety, point five-five, proposed rate point five-five. Economic development, point two-zero, proposed rate point two-zero. Property tax relief, point four-eight, proposed lit rate, point four-eight. Correction on rehabilitation facilities, point two-zero, proposed lit, point two-zero. Emergency medical service, existing rate is point zero-zero, proposed lit rate, point two-zero. And then there's also staff expenses for state judicial system, which is a point zero, proposed rate, point zero. The local income tax rate proposed above all becomes effective October first, twenty-twenty-four. Be it affirmed or ordained, that a public hearing will be held on proposed income tax rate modifications on May twenty-first. Proper notice of the public hearing was provided pursuant to IAC five dash three, dash one. Any questions, comments, please?
So this is the first reading, and then next month?
Next month we'll do the second.
And have the public. Have the public hearing, and then do the second, and adopt it.
Yes.
Okay.
Any questions from? This is for EMS services only. Unfortunately, Christine and I have been sitting down, Phil and I have sat down with umpteen different funds, we're going through all the funds that we can look at in a budget to come up with, and this is a concrete way of doing it. At least we know we have this money to depend on, because it's gonna be expensive. So after we do this, then I'll explain some other stuff, but let's get this out of the way first. I will entertain a motion, unless there are no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve. Ordinance zero four one six two zero two four B. Ordinance modifying local income tax rates Fulton County. Lori made a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Phil seconded, all in favor? Five, all against? One. Okay. Sign in the appropriate line if you would please.
No, we can't sign yet.
Oh, that's right, we can't, I'm sorry.
Up to next month.
This will be brought up for second reading and. Will be advertised for a public hearing next month. We'll get to public input at that time. So along with that same line, just real quick, we had a meeting with Parkview. I said substance in.
Friday.
Friday, yeah, Friday. It was very informative. They told us what, you know, we sat down with them to get their view on things. I still have some questions, but that's fine, that's what, that's what the process is for. The only thing we did was give the commissioners approval to enter into contract negotiations. With us, to have Ritter Associates entering into contract negotiations with Parkview. They did not seem to think that it was going to be a long drawn out process. We are kind of under the gun. So I think it went well, I had a good feeling when I left there. So. We're going to move forward, the commissioners voted last night to move forward with it. And we will continue to go. In that direction. So that's all I got on that right now.
So at this point Lutheran is still providing service until the end of June. Is that correct?
Is correct.
Okay.
There was a rumor, and stop me if I'm stepping out of play here. There was a rumor and I've heard, I've heard personally. That Lutheran wanted to get back into negotiations. And my understanding is that's false. Correct? I was, I was asked that question.
The rumor is false or?
No, the rumor is not false.
The commissioners has never been contacted by Lutheran since they pulled there.
That's, see, I, I, they were coming to me going, you know, why don't we, and so I just wanted to clarify that. In the meeting that we are not negotiating with Lutheran, the commissioners are not, I should say, we, the commissioner.
And Barry and neither.
The county and Barry and neither.
Yes, right.
But I did want to get that.
The only one he's, the only one he's got permission to talk to is been Parkview.
Yes, that's correct, okay, thank you.
So at this point, do you feel like that Parkview is interested in. Providing services to the county even though? They were dismissed in the first round?
Yes, what, what, what Parkview ended saying when, when we went back to Heartland and they raised the price?
Right.
Well, then that puts Parkview actually cheaper if you do the math. Over the four year contract than. Than Heartland, well, Parkview's in our back door, so we know a little bit what we got with Parkview. So it tickles us to death because they got the chopper out of here, they do some work through Woodlawn Hospital. So then there's relationship built with Gail and Chad, the guide to Runman. Nine one one service or the EMS service. So. We're excited about.
So, so you're somewhat encouraged.
Somewhat encouraged, of course.
And I know you were somewhat encouraged with Heartland, so.
We've been here, we've been here a couple times.
So maybe you're cautiously encouraged.
So I won't say nothing until the ink is signed, I won't.
I understand that.
But, no, we got to do something, I mean, you know, and. Ron can speak for himself, but I think we was both impressed when we walked out of that.
I still, I have a couple reservations that I want to see how the contract comes up, but yes, I was, I was. I was impressed once everybody understood each other, I think when we as a committee met. I think there was some misunderstanding, they misunderstood RFP, we misunderstood them. And I think this allowed us to, to clear up some misunderstandings and, and move forward. I hope he's ambitious the right way, ambitious the right way, but let's, again, I'm not going to jinx it. We've done this two or three times now, we can't afford another. So.
So there are more meetings to come.
Not with us, that they only, right now all Parkview can meet with is Barry and our attorneys.
Okay.
Ice Miller.
Okay.
They're not supposed to contact any.
Okay.
Ron, me, Gail, supposed to Barry and the attorneys, if Barry's got a question, he comes to us.
Okay.
And then Barry is only to talk to. The Parkview's attorneys and Chad and Trent, correct?
Correct, yeah, they're.
So that is moving forward.
Yes.
So, so we're past just the. Having coffee and talking, that's good, okay.
We should have an update by, by the head commissioner meeting, I would, I would think.
They was hoping two to three weeks.
Okay.
They should have something on the table.
Good.
I'm totally confused, which maybe I'm the only one. But what prompted them to pull out of the second agreement to start one?
We're confused too Randy, we haven't got a clue.
And then. Why would we think that they wouldn't do it again?
Who, Lutheran?
Who pulled out, Randy? I thought Lutheran did, didn't they break the contract?
Lutheran did pull out, yeah, well, they pulled out of the negotiations for the contract.
Why?
We don't have a clue, they didn't meet with us, they dropped a letter off.
That come from the coroner office.
They dropped a letter off in the auditor's office and we got a phone call saying they pulled it, thanks, they didn't even tell us to pay, so I didn't have a clue.
That leaves a tough, that really leaves a sour taste in my mouth, well, that's me.
Yeah.
You have to come from Akron.
Now, the other thing you might.
I've heard, I've heard in coffee shops what people were thinking there, so.
The, the other thing you might be thinking about, so, so then they did offer us an extension to stick in town to the end of June. Till, till we found an ambulance service. So that might be why you're signing that, we signed an agreement with them to stay until June till we got an ambulance service.
Yeah, but we're not negotiating with them at all, period. If that's what, if that's what your meeting is about, we are not negotiating with them at all, it's off the table.
So did they pull their ambulance out of Akron again?
They never looked back, when it pulled the first time it left.
And I thought they were in agreement that they were going to put one over there.
That was part of the contract.
That was part of the contract, but it didn't.
It never showed up.
So they never upheld their contract?
They don't know.
Because the contract never got signed.
They did uphold their contract, they didn't. We never approached another contract with them, so therefore the third amendment in Akron. Was a no go until they signed the contract. And then when they pulled out, of course, then.
That's done.
And it's done, so, but they did agree to stay until June thirtieth. And we were hoping that by then. We could have another service for the citizen.
In place.
In place. If, we're not sure what it's going to look like yet, but that's why we're negotiating with them right now.
Thank you for the update.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Rick.
Hope you got a question, now's the time to ask, that's for sure.
Randy, they're not going to, it's an agreement, they have an agreement currently with the commissioners. That contract is, was out of contract of January fourteenth. So what they've done in, in that negotiation process. They, they couldn't come to terms and they sent the commissioners a letter. Advising this is what they're going to do and if they could sign this agreement and they would. Stay till the end of June and that's what they're doing until we get another service in place. To maintain, if we don't, we'll have to. Figure something out, but at this current time, the negotiations have started with Ritter and Parkview.
And Randy, one thing I will say, at least they done that.
Yeah.
They've done that and if you go, you go around and talk to any of your fire departments, the boots on the ground, the people that, that work here in this community. Has done a swell job. So, so don't, you know, don't get the people wound up against them, it's the bosses up the ladder that. Did whatever, for whatever reason they done, it's not that. The people live in the community and serve the community.
Appreciate that. Thanks Rick, because they are, I mean, I've heard nothing but, but top notch reports from, from all the people that.
Everybody we've talked to.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
I have none.
Okay, we've got that.
That must be Mr.
That must be Mr. Lee.
I bet he thinks that we start at six o'clock too.
I actually thought you started at six thirty. So, yeah.
Well, you can sit here for half an hour or you can step through the booth.
I'd love to go now, I have.
You're welcome.
I have some handouts, can I just pass these off?
Absolutely.
How do we do this, and I'm, I'm actually showing you the help, Alex Lee has been here in the past.
Thank you.
But he was on vacation, so I'm filling in for him today.
And, and say your name again.
Tony Keltis.
And who are you with?
I'm with Parsons, we're an engineering consulting firm to the Indiana Department of Transportation.
You spelled your last name.
I'm sure it will be eight A. With a L and a P later.
Oh, he's my friend.
T I S.
Thank you.
And, well, there are.
Somebody wants to mention, basically there's two, two different ideas here, there's this eleven by seventeen.
Yourself. Yeah.
All right, hi, thank you, again, appreciate you having us here tonight, as I mentioned, my name's Tony Keltis, I'm with Parsons. We're working with the Indiana Department of Transportation on the US thirty one propel study. And I don't know if you've heard about that or not, that's been going on, that's a project that's been going on for. I guess a year and a half now and it's going to extend throughout the rest of this year. As well to take it to completion. And what the study is, is it's looking at long range potential improvements along the US thirty one corridor. And our study starts at three hundred north in Miami County and extends to the north to hundred, to seven hundred north in Fulton County. And late last year. The indot came out with what we call the level one screening of alternatives, our alternative evaluation is going to go through three steps. But the first level came out last fall, universal alternatives, and during that phase. We looked at a wide range of potential improvements in the corridor, adding lanes, different intersection treatments, interchanges, et cetera. And narrowed that down to what we call four potential primary concepts in our study area. That's looking at. Unsignalized intersection improvements, over, great separation, overpassing, underpasses of the intersections. Converting intersections to interchanges. And looking at a free flow facility with different ranges of access control. So in our study area, again, in Miami, northern part of Miami County and Fulton County, there's already different traffic signals along US thirty one, as you know. And so it's already free, free flow to some extent, but we would look at ways to improve that operation by adding additional access control. And so that was that first level that came out last fall, we had a public conference period on that. And we responded to comments and finalized that alternative, or that alternatives report. And now as I mentioned, we went on to what we call level two screening. And the focus in the level two screening. Was to look at the primary intersections in our study area. And apply those primary concepts or evaluate those primary concepts to see what makes the most sense for those intersections, right? So, you know, I've got this handout here and on the back. There's a map and it shows each of the primary sections that we looked at. And then we're looking north to south at Olson Road. County Road one hundred north Sixth Street, State Route twenty five. Old US thirty one, County Route one fifty, Wabash Avenue. Six fifty south, State Route sixteen, and then five fifty North Mexico Road, so. As you go from the corridor, through the corridor north to south. And so again, we applied those primary, the four primary concepts. And evaluated them each of the intersections. And came up with a recommendation that we're going to carry forward to the next level screening, right? And so that summarized on the back of this handout and we also have the A cap by eleven that just focuses on Fulton County, right? So we just have a Fulton County intersections here. So in each of those intersections, you see a variety of potential alternatives that are going to be evaluated further in the next phase of the study. And so as part of the next phase of the study, we're going to look at. That study area, we're going to look at kind of breaking it up into sections and looking at potential improvement packages. Different alternatives and, you know, then come up with a new report when we get through that phase as well. And ultimately we'll make a recommendation of alternatives that will be carried forward into the next phase of project development within that. So ultimately as our, as part of our study, we're not going to be making one recommendation for a preferred alternative. We're going to recommend, we're, we're, we're going to finish our study with a, with potential alternatives to be further evaluated. In more detail. Later on and, and those projects will ultimately be prioritized. Based on, on need by indot and funding availability, so overall they're looking at improvements over. You know, the next twenty or so years, it's like a twenty forty five plan and so maybe a while before you see these things roll out. So. Back to where we are now again, level two. We've got a report out, we've got a website, propel US thirty one and, you know, we encourage people to, to look there for more information on the study. We encourage any, everyone to review our study document and provide comments and ask any questions that you may have so that we can provide feedback. And just, you know, again, back to this one, one page here for Fulton County. So again, at, at, there's five intersections here. Listed for Fulton County as our primary intersections. Olson Road, you know, again, potential alternatives that we're looking at, a reduced conflict intersection and interchange. Then overpass or no build, which would mean leave it as it is today. And then you see that same type of recommendations at each of the intersections. At State Route twenty five where there's already interchange, we're just looking at potential. Roundabouts at those ramp intersections as opposed to the regular intersections that you have there today, so just two options there. Ramp terminal roundabouts or a no build alternative. At old US thirty one, reduced conflict intersection is an option, overpass, and again, no build. So that's kind of how we've looked at it again, at this stage, again, our, our whole study, you know, we're looking at thirty one for this large corridor, twenty five miles or so. But for this stage, our focus were on the potential treatments at the primary intersections and we've come out. We've evaluated those and made those recommendations, so. This, these, this type of document provides just a general overview and then we've got a hundred page or so document online. With more detail in terms of how we evaluated it. So I think that's what I wanted to go over with you folks here today, but certainly if you have any questions, I can try to answer those now.
Refresh my memory, what is a reduced conflict intersection?
So a reduced conflict intersection, there's, there's different treatments of that and. Basically, one of the primary goals with those types of intersections is at the cross street, you're removing that left turn from the cross street onto thirty one. And at the end of my head, I take a right turn. Yeah, J turns, right, there's a lot, sure, there's a lot of different, J turn is part of the RCI family. But there's, there's a lot of different names out there for how those, how those intersections, and there's different options, some have signals, some don't. Some allow the left turns off of third, off of the main, or the road lane, some don't, they also provide that, so.
Well, J turns are going to the category where it was a good idea that wasn't.
You don't like the J turns.
They're the dumbest thing I've ever seen, personally.
Yeah, yeah, we did that.
We can't do it semi, it's possible.
Right, well, I mean, according to the design standards, and I know, you know, you know, there's discussions on that, they're designed for large, any, any large vehicle.
You can't, I was.
That's not going to work.
That's not going to work.
I personally probably wouldn't be able to drive one straight down either, but.
I just.
Sure.
Yeah, definitely, we, we're hearing that and, you know, we're open to the feedback on, on the J turns or RCIs for sure. But just so you know, part of the thinking of that is that they've been shown to improve safety. Along the corridor.
I don't see how a J turn improves anything.
Yeah, and not only, you know, there's, I believe there's. Seven or so of them that have been installed in Indiana and what they've shown is, you know, roughly a fifty five percent reduction in crashes. At the intersection after they've been installed and they also dropped. And they also. And they also drop, and they also drop the, they also reduce the severe injury-related incidents as well. And that's consistent with national figures. But again, we certainly, we understand some, some folks don't like those, and we've heard those complaints, and we understand that, and.
What's your traffic count shut off for J-turns?
How, how high of a traffic limit?
Yeah, will they handle it? They shut off at a certain traffic value, right?
Yeah, I don't know what the max is, but when, as we are evaluating these in the next level, we are conducting traffic operations analysis.
So, you'll be doing a traffic count out there?
Yeah, we have traffic counts.
A recent traffic count?
Yeah, they're, they are recent. From NDOT, we have traffic counts, and so, we'll do, we will do operations analysis of those.
Because I know the ones I've seen, if when you pull out and turn right, and you gotta, all of a sudden, you have to jump two lanes, and you're pulling a trailer, and jump two lanes of solid traffic, or they were to make this left turn that J-turn, it don't work. And I know everybody I've been in, there isn't a person I've found yet that wants a J-turn. They're just not wanting.
And we're, we are receiving that feedback.
He could deliver the data.
And, um, and I guess, and I'm not saying that there won't be these reduced conflict intersections. They're very well equipped. But we're at a stage where we've identified them as potential solutions at the primary intersections, and they'll be evaluated further in the next phase of the study. And as I mentioned, ultimately, our study is going to conclude not with one single preferred alternative for the corridor. We are going to end up with a series of alternatives that would then go into more detailed evaluation in a later phase, focusing on smaller sections at a time.
What's there in interchange? I know whatever that is, but what do you call an interchange?
So, there's no, right, so at State Route twenty-five, that's a, that's a, that's a type of interchange. So, basically, it's not an at-grade, the roads don't cross at-grade at the, or they don't allow for that, that, that direct connection at the intersection. You have to get off and hit the side street and access it from there through.
And is there a reduced, one of these RCIs in the area that I can relate to? Because I don't know that I know what they are.
Yeah, now, I haven't, I'm going off, there's some on, there's one on thirty and State Route one oh one, I believe, is one of the intersections. And I believe State Route twenty-four and Lover's Lane, I think they said, maybe in the.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, thank you, yeah, yeah.
It's a pain.
And there's also one on thirty at Colesy Road between Columbia, or between Horson and Columbia State. The J-turn, the dance, there at the school.
So, again, they're, they are out there, and again, NDOT has installed some of these. And again, they have found them to reduce crashes and improve safety at the intersection.
All right. Any other question?
I have a question. So, I was literally just in a meeting about this in another county. And they provided, the people that were asking those folks to make a decision, they provided maps in which you were able to see the impact of each of those decisions on the current footprint. Is that something you're doing? So, when you're looking at all of these suggested activities, they showed, okay, if you choose the J-turn, this is what the, the impact. Because there were identified businesses that would be impacted, as well as homes that would be impacted based on each of these decisions and the decision makers.
Was that in Miami County or what?
No, it was in Cosiastoke County, but the, the decision makers, the council.
Oh, I see.
And the commissioners had documents that they could look at to show, because if you're making a decision or determining decisions, they were able to say, well, this takes out so-and-so's home, so there's no way that we're, that we are going to be, you know, comfortable with.
There's a different group doing the thirty study.
Oh, is that okay?
And it starts at seven hundred north. They go at seven hundred north, and they go.
So, there's no maps to show like the.
Well, actually, I was going to say, we have, we have, I don't know exactly which meeting you were at or if it was part of this study, a Propel study or a different study.
It's a Propel study. I just didn't know if there was like, because I think seeing the impact of things helps people to be able to.
But we, we have maps similar to what you're describing in our document available.
It's online, okay.
Those improvements that we've looked at, we have identified that potential construction footprint. So, you could see the potential impact area associated with the improvement.
Because if you're doing that, yeah.
These are preliminary, these are preliminary identification, and they'll be advanced further in our study at the next level, Level Three, and then further before anything would be implemented. But it does give you a sense of, of the potential impact of such improvement.
Like the, the physical impact of what that.
Right, it's, yeah, we, we call it a footprint. So, basically, it's a shaded area that, over an airbill photograph. And you can see, you know, what's inside of that footprint that would be potentially impacted.
Depending upon each of the suggestions.
Any other comments?
Sure.
So, from what I've seen, there's a couple of different ways that ramp terminal roundabouts can be done. What could we kind of expect with the State Route twenty-five interchange? And how would that be more efficient or safer than the current overpass that's there?
Well, the overpass would stay, right? And so, the ramps would come off, the ramps would come off as they do now for thirty-one, the ramps, the entrance ramps would remain. It's just where those ramps intersect with State Route twenty-five, there would be a roundabout installed there instead of a traffic signal or a stop sign that you have today.
Hopefully, they just leave it alone.
Yeah, well, I mean, again, those will all, that'll all be evaluated further. And we do have the no-build option listed as still one of our alternatives for all, for all the intersections we're looking at.
So, obviously, when this is done and complete and becomes, you know, smooth, trouble-free travel, every county road that's not on here will be blocked off.
No, that's, that's not, that's not, that's not what that map is conveying. The map's just conveying which intersection you focused on.
Okay, well, I guess let me ask it a different way. When this project is complete, so whatever happens at Olson Road, whatever's decided, from Olson Road to the county line, all those county roads are going to be blocked off?
No, that's not, no, that hasn't been determined yet. We're gonna, we, we're, in our next level of screening, we're going to look at all the secondary roads and come up with similar, you know, we're going to have different improvement packages. So, there'll be different alternatives at each of those intersections in between there as well. And we'll be looking at, when we look at those improvement packages, you know, we'll be looking at kind of like a no-build alternative and then different alternatives with increased access control. So, you, you may have one alternative that has more potential closures than others, but there'll be a range of alternatives that we're presenting in the next, in the next phase of the study. There's no, there's no, there's no decision yet at this time on how any of the intersections will be treated.
Well, obviously, they can't build an overpass every mile. I mean, that's, you know, that's not going to happen. So, some of these roads will sooner or later be blocked off, I would assume.
I, I mean, you're, I, I think you're probably thinking if ultimately thirty-one becomes a freeway, you would potentially see more closures on those streets. But we don't know, as we are here today, we don't know that that's what's going to be ultimately recommended. And again, we're not, and that won't, no recommendation of a facility type is going to, is going to come out of this study. Not one, you know, we'll be, again, we'll have still a range of alternatives that would be carried forward into, into the future beyond this study.
I just saw something on the map I didn't like, sorry.
Any other questions? Well, I see the, I see the value, and, and limited access around South Bend. I see the value definitely improvement around Fulton County. But I don't, I just don't see where the ends justify the means through this rule, the distraction between the two. So.
Basically, Randy, your real safety issue is crossing thirty-one.
Grade crossings.
Grade crossings, where you actually have to cross a semi, cannot hardly cross thirty-one. You know, that's your problem. Right-hand turns, left-hand turns, that's all fine. But when you're crossing the bypass, that's where the danger comes in. That's, that's the real, that's what they're trying to eliminate.
Especially when the grass is tall and you can't see.
Yeah. But the good news is we've got one-ten at seven hundred north pulled out of the Bell Study, and it is ready to go construction, and I think it's twenty-seven. So, there will be an interchange of some sort of that. Well, basically, ten, one-ten, and seven hundred north. We teamed up with Marshall County, if you guys remember, a couple of years ago, went to the state and got that pulled out because of the safety issues. We're having too many accidents at one-ten, ten, and then seven hundred north. Be just an overpass, basically, for the schools, buggy, buggy, buggy traffic. And that's already been halfway designed and engineered, and so.
Just looking like at, at Steed Route sixteen, which is in Cass County. You've got a funeral home and a vacant historic house that is gonna, you're gonna encumber quite a bit of expense to, to put an overpass in there. You're gonna have to properly get rid of those. I don't know. I know, I just scratch my head sometimes quite often because they, out here, not too far from Wabash Road, out here on thirty-one, they've bought a property, destroyed the house. There's a nice farm pond there, a nice new house. And left for me, I could have been easier to just go over here to the farmer and buy an access process. I don't understand the logic of it. Why can't they do that? Wouldn't that be a lot cheaper than, than destroying a guy's farm pond and his home? And I know they paid a lot more money than they could have if they'd just got an access road off the county road. I'm just thinking out loud, I guess. Is there, is there a reason why they do dumb things like that? For me, it's dumb.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the specific situation, but it's, it's time to move it up.
Well, like Kate Torres down there, okay? You know where that's at, south of fourteen on thirty-one. They got a, had a good business coming in now there. Now, you're going to block that off. Why couldn't you go down there off that other county road and make an access road where they still got their business? I don't, I don't, I don't understand it.
Yeah, again, you know, as we're looking at this project further in the next level, and we, you know, at those locations, we're looking at closing, crossing. We will also consider alternate access, I think, similar to what you're, what you're speaking of. You know, again, I don't, I don't know the exact, you know, thing you're referring to. But based on what I'm hearing you say, you know, you know, by, by just closing, then the business is lost. You know, we will consider, again, alternate access if it's viable, you know, to help, you know, that property remain. You know, we're looking at a lot of different options. There's a lot of coinies in looking at those things, and we're still investigating.
Randy, I don't mean to cut you off because you've got a lot of concerns, but that's not his, I mean, his purview right now, nor ours. So, that's something to do in a future time. But your, your concerns are noted.
Yeah.
And you're not the only one. It's, it's expressed, but thank you for your, your questions.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you for this.
Thank you.
Okay. Did everyone get a chance to read the minutes? If everyone's read, entertain, what's, entertain the minutes from March nineteenth meeting.
So moved?
So moved. Pete Second, all in favor? Six zero. This is another sign. We have one transfer request. And that is from twelve thirty-five, Lit P S A to Communications, Repair and Maintenance, to Office Supplies, fifteen dollars. Claimed used the wrong object, object account, three-two-three-zero-one, Repair and Maintenance. Needs to be transferred to the proper line item, two-one-zero-zero-zero, Office Supplies. Make a motion to approve. Steve approved. Phil Second?
Paul Second.
Phil Second, all in favor? Five zero, Peter Steames. Now, we've got several additional appropriations. I got to really that out. First one's from County General to Capital Outlays, ten thousand eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. It's to the sheriff. That's for two sheriff vehicles. One at sixty-three twenty-three, the other at forty-five seventy-five. The above requested amounts or funds received from the officer of two vehicles and the insurance payout from the two thousand sixteen Ford Taurus that was totaled when struck by another vehicle on US thirty-one. Request the appropriation of these funds to be used toward the purchase of a replacement vehicle. Entertainment move approved. Steve approved. Second, Pete Second, all in favor? Six zero. I will sign and pass. Next one is Coombe Bridge for the Highway Department. Additional appropriations for Bridge number fifty, sixteen thousand six hundred and forty dollars. The amount anticipated to be spent for the Bridge number fifty federal aid project was underestimated. Appropriations to cover future incurred costs, again, this is out of eleven thirty-five, Coombe Bridge. Entertained a motion to approve?
So moved.
Phil, Pete Second, all in favor? Six zero. Sign and write it in this. Next one. Is from Fund eleven fifty-two, L A P C to Office, or zero-three-six-one, Emergency Management, for training, two thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. This is covering the portion of the twenty-three training, calling the twenty-four training budget to go into the red. The twenty-four training budget will be covered by a grant. Questions? Steve motion to approve. Peter Second, Randy Second, all in favor? Five zero, Peter Steames. The next one, from eleven seventy-six, M V H, Other Charges, four-six-seven-zero. Appropriations to cover the schooling fee for Randy Miller C D L and replenish funds for C D L drug screen and federal complaints. Again, out of eleven seventy-six, motion to approve, or any questions, I'm sorry. Motion to approve, or motion to approve?
Paul Second.
Phil Second, all in favor? Six zero. Next one is eleven eighty-one, Plat Book, Auditor's Office, Preservation Services, one thousand six hundred and forty. Information and Records Association twenty-twenty-three bill that was sent in twenty-four. There was no budget in twenty-twenty-four for this service as we went digital going forward, and we need to appropriate to pay the one last bill. Any questions? Motion to approve, or motion to approve, second?
Paul Second.
Randy, Randy Seconded, all in favor? Six zero. Sorry, Lori, I anticipated. And last but not least, rainy day to the commissioners. This is a contract, twenty-six thousand three hundred dollars. Eighty-eight transition plan and. ADA Transition Plan and Title Six Information Plan Updates. Any questions?
Don't need Commissioners.
I will entertain, if there are no questions, entertain, Pete made the motion to approve, need a second?
I'll second.
Phil seconded, all in favor? Six-zero. And that's it.
That's it.
So.
How many appropriations did you have from the highway?
Uh, Pete, come down, please.
Two. Should be three.
I got five of one, and that's off the list.
You had three last night.
One was the bridge, I remember that.
Should've been sixteen thousand six hundred and forty from the bridge, twenty-nine thousand.
Didn't do that one.
I don't remember, twenty-nine thousand. Is that all's in your folder?
The way the Commissioners last night.
She took back the office, too.
Sorry.
Same staff.
I can run down there, I guess, look.
Would you please? Thank you.
It's on here.
So.
Electronic.
It's electronic, well, I don't have it up, so. Thank you.
I've got a copy of it.
You have one?
My computer's out.
Taking a copy, taking a.
And the Commissioners deal.
They could bring it to me.
There's one. Okay. Well, I see, Thomas, we did M V H, well.
The bridge one-sixty-one, we didn't do. It's like the last one, one-sixty-one. Yeah, it's the last appropriation.
See, that's why that was the question, that was the sense.
Did the Commissioners?
Advertised correctly.
Did the Commissioners?
I know three of them say that.
Did the Commissioners sign them last night?
Yes, yes.
Holly okayed them too.
Okay.
Oh, okay, I do remember that email that she said that, right?
Yeah. You did and she did.
Mm-hmm.
Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, I remember John sent that email, Holly okayed it.
Okay.
We had to run a correction in the newspaper.
Yes, I remember.
That meant the qualification for it.
And you did, and it was presented and signed and, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
On my best case.
We accept them as they were presented on our, on here, and that should cover if they need to have it.
All right. Okay, um, I don't have a sign sheet for this.
I'm sure that you can sign later.
I think she's gonna get you, see if she can find it, isn't she? Isn't that what she's doing?
Yeah, she went down. So we will go ahead and do this, and then we will.
Then you'll pass them to sign.
Then we'll pass it to sign.
Fair enough.
All right, this is out of Coombridge for the Highway Department, Bridge number one-sixty-one, twenty-nine thousand. In fact, that's what you talked about earlier. The amount anticipated to be spent for Bridge one-sixty-one federal aid project was underestimated. Appropriation to cover future projected costs. Any questions? If no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve, Lori approved, Pete seconded, all in favor? Six-zero. And I will have a thing to sign, and we'll get that signed.
Okay, that was Bridge one, who, who, so for, for the minutes, who Lori approved?
I.
And Pete second.
And Pete second. Okay, okay, sorry.
No, that's all right.
Okay, this is my way. Okay.
Thank you.
That's all right.
No, I'm thank you for bringing that up.
Well, that's okay.
Okay.
So the next one is.
All right, we'll.
The only thing I found was what was in the folder, and I printed those off, but that isn't the same as that, so I don't know. We have that one.
We've done that one.
Which other one do we do? Four-six-hundred and twenty-nine thousand.
Twenty-nine, and this is the one we need.
That's on there.
Okay, all right. We, she took notes for you, so.
So we did Bridge one-sixty-one.
One-sixty-one, yes.
Lori moved to approve, Pete seconded. Okay. Okay?
Okay.
And motion carried. Okay. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's quite all right, we didn't get this done right.
Now you're on what, Bridge fifty?
No, we're done.
There was, there was three.
There was three. Pete says he has two, here's one, so.
So, so that's it?
Akron High School, that's all.
Okay, okay. Stop it. Okay.
All righty, next, old business. Pete?
No, sir.
Randy?
No, sir.
Lori? Steve?
No.
Phil?
No.
I have none. We've already talked about the EMS and ambulance, so that was my old business. Shantel, anything you know? Anyone? Old business? Then we will move to new business. Pete?
No.
Randy?
No.
Lori? Steve? Phil?
Just a couple, I'll be brief.
Since when?
Be brief. Uh, the county's portion of the host fee funds for December twenty-twenty-three was twenty-four thousand eight hundred and two dollars and eighty cents, and the county's portion of the host fee funds for January this year was thirty thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars and eighty-three cents. So, and my second one is, I have to give a shout-out. Habitat for Humanity is having, did you guys talk about this last night?
No, we did not.
Is having the, their ribbon cutting ceremony for their new office and storage building, which is behind the House of Decor, on Thursday, May second, at four o'clock. And the reason I'm telling you that is because ARPA funds of ninety thousand is what allowed that, um, new building to happen. So if anybody wants to go to the ribbon cutting ceremony for Habitat for Humanity, Thursday, May second, four o'clock, at nine-seventeen Franklin Avenue, um, behind the House of Decor. That's all I've got.
I don't have any, Shantel. Anyone out there, old business? With that being said, sir, do you have something you'd like to say? If you do, please state your name.
Bob Palmus, and, uh, your website said this started six-thirty.
Website says six-thirty.
Yeah, will the minutes be on the website?
Uh, not, if we after our May meeting, we have to approve them before they're on the website.
Right, but then, next week, I could read the minutes.
From, but we just approved tonight, and that was March's meeting. April's meeting will not be on until after we approve it in May. They run a month behind.
I see. You, you already answered the questions you said about the ambulance situation, so I wasn't here to hear what the questions were. Can I give you a couple, short answers?
Sure.
How's the tax collected? If there is a tax, how's it collected?
The tax, we are starting the process, it's called the local income tax. It's two-tenths of a percent on state income.
For everybody that works in Fulton County?
Everybody that works in Fulton County.
Who would possibly have the.
I think it's, I think it's for residents, it's not big works, isn't it?
It's on the county income tax, for residents of Fulton County.
Thank you.
Of the residents?
Yes.
So people working in Fulton County, the funds wouldn't be paid?
No, it'll be on your county, if your county resident.
Be paid into that fund?
I do not know an exact number, no. The, the estimate income from that is right in the vicinity of a million dollars a year. That's based on income of working folks in Indiana.
So you're gonna be short start with it?
That, and we're looking at other options, yes. We have no other way around it. I hate it, 'cause I'm, I'm gonna have to pay more.
Do, do we get better service with the new, the proposed ambulance service? I, I was told it, a difference between E M Ts and paramedics.
Kayla, this is your bail. There is a difference between E M Ts and paramedics?
There is. There is basic, there's A L S and B L S, and what's, it's in advance, and then B L S is basic. And we are in negotiations with Parkview, um, at this time. As you know, um, or may not know, Parkview has been in our backyard twenty-plus years. They'll be here, their anniversary is twenty-five years this year. They work with our local hospital here, Wood Lawn. Um, they have excellent staffing, they have great relationships with us. I've worked with them that twenty-five years. Um, the, the director that oversees EMS and I, we work hand in hand. Um, that relationship and that partnership is already there. So when you look at Lutheran and you look at Parkview, obviously, they're two different worlds, they're two different companies, but, uh, they have policies and procedures in place, same as anyone else, maybe a higher standard, and their, uh, proposal to us, they gave us, um, what their costs are to the public. Um, those are different than your current, um, ambulance service now. So the service will be the same. They have very good paramedics and, uh, basics as well.
You say the same, so it'll be an ambulance in Kewaunee?
That is correct. Our current contract negotiations is for three ambulances. Now, in the beginning, we, we, we're, we're gonna have to move, so, and we've gotta get those assets here in the county. They're already established in the surrounding counties, mainly on the east side of the state and here, but, um, they already have an establishment with ambulance service. They do air medics, obviously, they do, uh, ambulance service, and, um, they have the same adequate staff, they work with the same tools.
Do we really believe?
Maybe different brands.
Do we need an ambulance in Kewaunee, or could we have better trained first responders?
Well, the, the problem lies with these first responders are volunteer. Uh, they do not get paid, it might be five dollars a run. Um, they have to be, uh, they don't have to be, but they take an, it's called an E M R, um, where they can, uh, be their first responder status, but getting that volunteer group and having them at the station and available is, is a struggle. And it's a struggle on, to hire folks as well, as it is with any company, agency, or healthcare situation, to keep working staff. But, um, they, they move their ambulances, they, their coverage, they understand the coverage, um, they speak our language. I will tell you, they use the same EMS, emergency medical dispatch protocols and standards that I do, which is the best of the best, the highest, they're international. Um, so we're already working on the same page, it's just you're going to see a different ambulance here with a different color. You're still gonna have service. And so what a lot of people don't know is on the outer agencies, like the east and the west side, is these, these territories cover outside because your surrounding counties don't have ambulances either, so these county pays our first responders to go into their county. So you got somebody like Kewaunee and Akron, that they're serving Cosiasko, Mar, uh, Walbash, Miami County, you know, and then you got over at Kewaunee and Grass Creek area, the, the farthest corner, you got one Commissioner that lives in a county highway, they live clear at the corner. It takes a good twenty, thirty minutes at minimum driving a speed that you don't want. So having those outside ambulance service is a need for service for emergent care. And when we start moving those, 'cause sometimes we have four or five calls and all ambulances are out, but what we do, we never get to ground zero where we don't have an ambulance here. We pull from another county, and that means that county is missing one of their ambulances, and we place those strategically throughout. And so Parkview has their system, they also have a CAD system, and they also know where all their ambulances are at all times. So your level of care is not going to change. And is what's sad is we've developed relationships with, they call it the boots on the ground, or our local paramedics and E M Ts here, and it's gonna be sad, so hopefully some of those states, they don't have jobs and they work for Parkview, um, with the state, with those same faces. So it's like losing a family member, really, when you have that, but at a corporate level, they're looking at it at a different angle versus something here locally when we need those needs and those necessities and that care for our community. So I will tell you, being and working with, uh, Parkview for twenty-five years, I don't, I don't think a fret, a threat is there. I, I was very impressed with the meeting that we had, we were all on the same page, it went well like a well-oiled machine. There was a misunderstanding when they put their first R F P in, um, just understanding R F, R F P, and that's a request for proposal, and, um, Lutheran was there with the numbers. I mean, nobody's gonna beat zero dollars, right? So with Parkview, that was, um, I mean, that was too much money to switch to somebody that was already in our own backyard to begin with. And then when we went with Lutheran a long time ago, Parkview was here too, but they never even got a chance to bid at that time as well. So they are, they are here, they have always been here, they have never left, and, uh, they are great for our community, and I can't say enough that Barry's in negotiations with him. And, um, any questions can be directed to Barry Ritter, because at this time, we're out, and the Commissioners have granted that, um, negotiations to start yesterday. So he'll be working with their attorneys and Parkview to make sure, um, our requests here locally are met, and, um, and those dollar exchanges are with the council, and, um, go from there. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for talking.
Hey, that's quite all right, and I will look into that. I thought they've been taking, they're in a process of redoing the website. I do know that.
Hopefully, July.
Pardon me?
We're hoping July.
July? That they're in a process of redoing. I didn't know it was still six-thirty.
It's, it says five o'clock on the website.
Thank you.
So.
I maybe I had the wrong website. Fulton County, Indiana Council, and I swear, the, the list of things, the meetings every third Tuesday, six-thirty.
Well, now you know, it's a five o'clock.
Five o'clock, and you're welcome.
By the five o'clock, so I wasn't even close to being.
Look, you still got here, so.
Kim canceled on the TV there on town.
Yeah, Chantel, R T C.
I can't afford TVs. I got my, I got my transistor radio from nineteen-sixty-one. Keeps playing W L S.
So, is, is there any taken motion? Well, one last thing before we do, does anyone wanna read this thing from Charlie Root on the Kewaunee Public Library, and they used the ARPA funds? All right, all right. At that, I'll entertain, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Pete made the motion, Randy seconded, all in favor, six-zero. Thank you very much for your time.